Welcome everyone to the Town and Pownell's regular select board meeting. Uh, May eleventh, two thousand twenty-three at six oh one P M. I like to call the meeting to order. Order number roll call.
Angie Rollin.
Jamie Percy.
Brian Harris.
Mike Gardner.
Approval of the agenda. Public comment, approval of minutes of April twenty-seventh, March twenty-third and April twenty-seventh. Accounts payable and payroll. Correspondence, excess weight permits. Green Mountain Racetrack update from the State of Vermont Division of Fire Safety. Town designated keeper of legal records discussion approval. Domestic animal ordinance further review. Public comment. Executive personnel discussion regarding public official. Possible action taken. Executive personnel discussion with a public official possible action taken. We need to add an executive after that for legal. Public comment and adjourn.
Make a motion to accept with the change.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
We don't have to. Uh, Hannah, is there any public comment? I have one public comment actually. I'm not sure it falls under public comment. It could fall under correspondence. Let's put it under correspondence. Never mind. Sorry. Approval minutes, April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, select board meeting.
So moved.
Any questions, corrections? additions, deletions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Uh, minutes of March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, special sewer commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on that? Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Minutes of April twenty-seventh, tw- two thousand twenty-three sewer commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any questions, comments on that one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Accounts payable, May fifth, two thousand twenty-three, eighteen thousand one hundred and eight dollars forty-five cents.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Accounts payable in Newtown Hall, May sixth, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-two thousand nine forty-four thirteen.
So moved.
Second.
Questions on that one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Accounts payable, May twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, eleven thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-two cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Payroll, May fifth, two thousand twenty-three, eleven thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eleven cents.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Payroll, May twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, ten thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, correspondence.
Okay, so I have a couple. Uh, the first is uh, from Donna Lozon. She just asked me to remind people of the fire danger levels. Although we are not in a burn ban currently, it is still very dry and um, things like flicking cigarettes or leaving your campfires burning can be very, very dangerous and our firefighters have been um, really stretched trying to deal with some of the current um, uh, recent issues. So just please be mindful and remind, you know, friends, family, neighbors of the same.
I'm surprised we're not because we are at high throughout the whole state.
I asked Craig this morning, um, Ellen and I did, and he said, no, we're in that small little section that isn't in a burn ban, but it's uh, risky still. Yep. Um, so the other correspondence was, it's basically a survey that the Town and Pownell is going to be putting out or distributing. It's from the Vermont Healthy Communities Technical Assistance Program. Jennifer Boucher and Boucher and I have been working on this, uh, Jennifer's from Parks and Rec. And it basically focuses on the needs and the wants of our community. And it's looking at Pownell Center and how to develop it or what we could add or bring in that would um, be appreciated by our community or really useful. Um, so the survey, it is, it does appear long, but it's just pretty big print. It's gonna be available electronically. I'll try to send it out, put it on our Facebook, our website. Um, and Angie also suggested sending it to the school to distribute, which is a great idea. Um, I will also be attempting to collect survey answers at fishing derby and I think Jennifer's gonna set up at Spring Fest on Saturday at the school. So um, if anybody wants to help spread the word, that would be great. And we have paper copies available of the survey also. Thank you.
Thank you.
You got all you have?
Yes.
I have one thing for correspondence and and I don't wanna act on it tonight, but I want you guys to think about it. It's something that's I wanted to do, uh, this whole after I got elected, um, chairperson of the board again. I'd like to, before we start our meetings, I'd like to say pledge of allegiance to the flag.
That's awesome.
That's awesome.
I would
I'm all for it.
Let's, we'll put it on the agenda for next meeting. Cause it's not on there tonight. I don't wanna get in any trouble for doing things the wrong way. So I'd like to put it on for the next meeting. Um, to to discuss it and vote on that. Thank you.
Everybody, uh, my apologies for being late. Um, just was caught up at work. I just wanna let you know I'm here. And I had an idea about putting, uh, the pledge of allegiance before each, uh,
Hi Bob.
Hi Bob.
Excess weight permit.
We have two, one from Gurney Brothers Construction and one from Miles Lumberco. Uh, both are fleets and both have been viewed and approved by Joel Ruperman.
What's your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any just questions on those? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Okay. Brings us to the Green Mountain Racetrack. Update from the State of Vermont Division of Fire and Safety. Are we gonna, are we gonna put this whole packet into on our website? Can you do that? Okay. So it's a pretty extensive packet. I'm gonna go through this and I'm gonna hit some bullet points. I'll read some of them totally. From start to finish. I'm gonna go from there. Unfortunately, it's not great news. Um, April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three from the State Division. Uh, State Vermont Division of Public Safety. Uh, it's addressed to Steven Solar, Allison Solar. Stockbridge Realty Advisors LLC, Green Mountain Racetrack LLC, Pownell Vermont. Reference on the grandstand building, seven zero one two U S Route seven, Pownell Vermont, structure ID six six five two. I'm not gonna go through that stuff every time when I read these because they're all on there. Just wanted to be clear what we're talking about. Attached to this letter are findings, dear, dear Steven Solar and Allison Solar. Attached to this letter are findings and orders issued by the Vermont Department of Public Safety pursuant to twenty V S A twenty-seven thirty-three. These findings and order, orders require you to secure the property listed above with a six-foot-high industrial-type fence with no trespassing signage affixed to the fencing at fifty-foot intervals. We recommend you coordinate with emergency responders regarding the construction of the fence because they will need access to the structure in an emergency. The findings and orders also require you to have the structure evaluated by a Vermont licensed structural engineer. Submit a report to our Rutland Regional Office. Included with these findings and orders are previously undeliverable administrative penalties issued for failing to comply with securing the structure. Upon review of the structural engineering report, further enforcement action may be considered. These orders are necessary to enforce the provisions of law regarding the maintenance of premises, prevention of fires and protection of the public in chapter one seventy-three of Title twenty. Failure to comply with these orders within the time specified may subject you to additional enforcement action pursuant to twenty V S A twenty-seven thirty-four, including injunction relief and financial penalties. Please contact Michael DeRosa, Executive Director, Division of Fire Safety with any questions about this matter. Um, Jennifer Morrison, Commissioner, Vermont Department of Public Safety. Mister and Mrs. Solar, please find attached to this email a PDF file containing several documents relating to your property. It's seven zero one two. These documents include a cover letter from the Commissioner of the Ver- Vermont Department of Public Safety, two prior citations. The Vermont Division of Fire Safety's fire inspection results. Findings and orders relating to your Pownell property and the Division of Fire Safety's rules for administrative citations and penalties. Please confirm you receive these documents as soon as possible. We will also attempt to mail these documents to you. Please note that if you do not confirm receipt of these documents, we may seek the service of them through other means. We are concerned about the safety risk posed by the large structure on your property. We wanna discuss ways to address that risk with you. Please contact us as soon as possible to address these concerns. There's a certified letter that was sent to Mister Solar on five seventeen, two thousand twenty-two. With facts and findings on it.
Do you mean twenty-three or?
No, it says twenty-two.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's crossed out with a, with another date on it.
Okay.
So, yeah, Kate asked me, we haven't got to the seventeenth yet.
Oh, that's true.
So, good question though.
So it's been ongoing and I actually spoke to Alex Steele, who gave me an update, I believe it was last week. He said that, um, Mister Solar has been served, but he has not accepted the packet yet. Which is, um, what's been happening. He's avoiding accepting the delivery of the packet.
That's what's been hit.
This, this one here, this is a fine of a thousand dollars.
Big deal.
This is a report, uh, from the Division of Fire and Safety. This is a violation notice. Vacant buildings must be secured and storage removed. It's, it's basically everything that we've said all along that's been going on. There's pedestrians walking from the site towards the north, private railroad crossing. Building is completely open. There's no security fencing available. No work is in progress to secure the building. The date of this is, wait a minute, I seen the date on this one. Hmm, why am I not seeing the date here?
One from Division of Fire Safety?
Yeah, this one from
Bottom right-hand corner. It's like on the footer.
Oh, yep, sorry, Ryan, you're absolutely right. Five seventeen twenty-two. So, that's a duplicate. The structural report. That's in here, just explaining how to fire. What the building construction was. This one here is it explains the authority, it explains the building description. The grandstand building inspection overview. Um, which happened uh, between August ninth, two thousand five, September seventeenth, two thousand twenty. Numerous inspections conducted. They can be characterized as routine and normal findings for both outdoor and indoor public use. Um, so this is all prior to the fire. This is just a timeline of things that have happened down there, temp permit application. I'm not gonna go through this whole thing. So this is, it goes, it goes into after the fire on September sixteenth, two thousand twenty. Report of the fire was received at eleven P M. Uh, for the main racetrack building, Assistant Fire Marshal Stanley Baronowski conducted the fire investigation. And there's a case number. September seventeenth, Regional Manager Gerald Gerro, G J Gerro, and Assistant State Fire Marshal Matt Jacobowski visited the site at ten thirty. Fire investigators believed it was safe enough to enter the structure for purposes of conducting an internal inspection. At one Gerald, at one P M, Gerald Viz- Vizina, sorry. P E of the division's U S A R team arrived on site to conduct a rapid assessment of the structure. Mister Vizina indicated the building is not safe and recommended boarding it up to prevent people from entering or demolish it. Signs were posted identifying the building as unsafe and prohibiting access to the structures. Then it goes on, G J Gerro notified Steven Solar that the grandstand building shall be secured to prevent trespassing as cited under NFPA one, section ten point one, two point one, two thousand fifteen edition. Mister Solar was also on notice for securing the building and notifying the Rutland Regional Office with this plan of corrective action. December seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Complaint of unsafe and unsecured building received from Pownell resident. April fourth of twenty-two. Assistant Fire Marshal, um, Steele conducted an exterior walk-around inspection survey of the premises per request of Regional Manager G J Gerro. Was noted at time of this walk-around inspection and survey. Pedestrians were walking from the west to east at the, at the time of inspection. No evidence of work was in progress to fence or secure the building from trespassing. Numerous walls and interior components of combustible material remain available at the corners of the building. Large amounts of debris and plate glass litter the site evident in nearly all exterior walls and surface. May seventeenth and August third, two thousand twenty-two. An administrative penalty for violations of NFPA one, section ten point one, two point one. Administrative penalties were assessed and delivered via certified mail to the address on file for Stockbridge Realty Advisors LLC. The fines were not accepted after several attempts. These are the findings. Uh, per NFPA, the structure is in a state of disrepair and poses a significant hazard to the general public. Building has a four-story glass panel exterior wall assembly once used for occupant viewing of racing. Wall assembly is so badly damaged around the front of the structure. Oops, sorry. The wall assembly is so badly damaged and structurally compromised that many glass panels have fallen out and landed on the ground around the front of the structure. Due to the size and height of the structure, the falling glass can be found up to fifty feet from the building. Anyone passing by this area could be seriously injured or killed by falling glass debris and panels. The building deemed unsafe by the authority having jurisdiction, which is A H G, requires the owner, operator, or occupant of the building to abate the hazard through a plan of corrective action approved by the A H J. The hazardous conditions causing the building to be unsafe can be either repaired or rehabilitated or may deba- or may be demolished to abate the hazard. Uh, NFPA again, twenty fifteen edition, the building has been vacant for several years and the condition of the building is deteriorating at a rapid pace. All the structural components are now exposed to the weather elements, including wind. Vacant buildings must be secured and fuel load removed. The building is not secured and there is fuel load inside the structure. Again, this is the vi- this is the work order. I've already gone through that. He's ordered to, I'm not gonna go through all of it. He's ordered to secure the perimeter by installing a six-foot-high fence. Must be anchored, the fence must be anchored and secured. The location of the fencing shall consider the fall zone of the glass. The fence shall be provided with signage, unsafe structure. No trespassing by order of the Commissioner of Public Safety. The fence shall be, shall be completed by May thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. Sure. Building must be evaluated by a Vermont licensed structural engineer by May thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. Report shall be specific to the structural stability, collapse potential, and any other hazard mitigation recommendations. A copy of the report shall be submitted to the Division of Fire Safety Rutland Regional Office by June fifteenth. Upon review of, June fifteenth of twenty twenty-three. Upon review of the report, additional enforcement action orders may be forthcoming. Failure to comply with this order may result in additional enforcement action, including injunctive relief, financial penalties pursuant to twenty V S A twenty-seven thirty-four. Dated twenty-seventh day of April, two thousand twenty-three, Jennifer Morrison. And then this, this is rules for administrative citations and penalties. I don't think we need to get into all that. That's a whole kind of a whole different
State level.
Change, so everything is just gonna save a lot of time because it's just a lot of verbiage that it, it explains the fines, it explains a lot of stuff in here that doesn't pertain, excuse me, to this situation. So that's it in a nutshell. I'd like to get the board's feeling. I have some feelings on this. Where, what we need to do as a, as a board to take some next steps, but I'd like to get some, some feelings and ideas from you guys.
Well, first of all, on the report, it doesn't say anything about the air quality or asbestos or anything, right? Cause some people are very concerned about that. But it's basically just the deterioration of the building and the safety.
That's just to secure the building. I'm sure when the demolition order comes, then that's when they're gonna be worried about the asbestos and lead.
Yeah, some words that, that mention that as far as, I can't remember if this report or one previous.
I just know
there, you know, how they had to take and go about demolishing the building.
Quite a few residents are worried about that.
Hmm, justifiably so.
Yes.
Biggest thing. People still going in there and cause they've got access. Somebody's gonna get hurt. I mean, we said that right along, that eventually somebody's gonna get seriously hurt, injured on this.
At the beginning of that, Mike, uh, I, I think you said that there was something, uh, and I, I maybe, maybe I misunderstood. I thought it was that the town had to do something to get a structural report. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think, I believe Steven Solar needs to hire someone.
Okay, alright.
So Steven Solar needs to have a structural report done, not the town.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
That's the matter to the state.
And that, uh, and that just came down or was that, or was that reading something that was, uh, you know, a, a couple of years old?
Oh, it just came down, um.
This letter here from the State of Vermont Department of Public Safety is dated April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three.
Right, so that's a new order to the, uh, to the owners of the racetrack to get a structural, uh, a structural report uh, uh, to the state of Vermont, uh, or to our, uh, fire and safety. And then, uh, uh, okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was a new order and
Right, so, um, the new order is due by
Fifteenth, right?
May thirtieth, by the end of this month. Um, the, the, this
That was the fencing also, right?
The fencing, the fencing is due by May thirtieth, the six-foot-high industrial fence. Um, secured, anchored and secured is, uh, shall be, shall be completed by May thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. And then
In that order, I'm sorry, in that order came out in, in April of twenty twenty-three.
This order right here that I'm reading from Jennifer Morrison is dated twenty-seventh day of April, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, I got you.
And then the building must be evaluated by a licensed structural engineer by May thirtieth. And then the, uh, the valuation, the report must be submitted by June fifteenth of two thousand twenty-three.
Okay.
Any more comments or questions or, um?
Unfortunately, the state's running the same problem that
The town.
We did. When we attempted to order health orders, the whole nine yards fire to the fire and even after the fire. So, I don't know what, or
I don't think there's anything we as a town can do at this point.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think to a certain degree you're right, Ryan. I think to a certain degree you're absolutely right. But I think the, and this is just my feelings on this. I think we've dubbed the realm of this long enough. And I think our Rutland Division of Fire and Safety. I think those guys have busted their butts to try and, and rectify this problem. I think G J Gerro and Matt Jacobowski and, and Mike DeRosa and Michael Steele and everyone that's been involved in our Rutland office, our local regional office has done everything that they can to, to, and I think this goes against this order kinda goes against what they had sent us, that they recommended. I think as a town, I think as a town, I think we reach out. I think we reach out to our first responders. I think we reach out to our fire departments. I think we reach out to our sheriff's department. I talk because they're our contracted, at this time, they're our contracted law enforcement. I think we reach out to the Vermont State Police if they wanna get involved. I think we compile some letters to the State Fire Commissioner, to Jennifer Morrison. From, from our fire, each one of our fire departments and the rescue squad. From, from Craig Odell is our
Emergency, uh,
He's our emergency management coordinator. He's also our forest fire warden in town. I think we compose a letter from the select board about how dissatisfied. Now, I'm not sure what it's gonna do. It's probably nothing.
Can we go up?
Secretary of State.
Can I ask?
Sure, Bob.
Oh, I, I just wanna, I, I make the suggestion, um, uh, one is we, you know, we're, we're kind of between a rock and a hard sp- uh, a hard place here because if we start taking action, then suddenly the, the liability for that property moves from the state to the town. And the, and the, and the remediation moves from the state to the town. And we don't want that to happen. Um, what I would suggest is, uh, go down the path that, uh, I, I like the idea of getting, getting the statements. But, uh, let's have an executive session with our town attorney and ask him what, uh, what, what are our real options and what are the liabilities on each of the options, right? Because, uh, that we are going to, we're, we are going to take on some exposure in order to, uh, in order to be able to affect any change down there. Um, they're just down the path of, uh, a- as soon as we stick our, as soon as we stick our, our, our toes in there, uh, then it suddenly becomes our responsibility and we, we want to avoid that, but we also want to know, you know, do we have a lawsuit, uh, uh, capability? What are the pros? What are the cons? Those kinds of questions. I think we need to to, to probably be in an executive session with our town attorney and ask him for his, and just ask some advice on how we can expedite, uh, something here. Uh, because it, you're just ignoring the, it, it appears that they're just ignoring the, the, the state and the town.
Well, well, I think Mike's on the right track and to add to it, if we're sending it to the Department of Fire Safety and with concerns from our, um, local, uh, services, as well as the town, uh, health officer, zoning, whatever. And ask them if we should jointly with Fire Safety move it toward, is it possible to move to elevate this to the Attorney General's Office or Secretary of State to take and see if we can get more teeth in it.
Yeah, yeah.
With the services.
I, I, I agree. I agree, Jamie. And I, and I agree, Mike. I think that those are good steps. But I, I just wanna make sure that we're engaging our town attorney as well. To make sure we're covering ourselves and he could probably, he, he might have some advice for us on how he can put more teeth into it.
No, I just, I think that, I think like I said, I, I wanna, I wanna commend our Rutland Division that works down here all of the time. Those guys have worked and, and girls, um, have worked extremely hard on this for us. It seems like it's been dragged on forever. I do know they've worked, um, Angie and I went down there. I don't even remember when. And we met with them and, you know, we've been in contact with them. I just think, you know, I, and I agree with you, Bob. Let's make sure we're not gonna, not gonna, um, incur any liability by doing that, but if we can just send some letters of dissatisfaction to the, to the, you know, a little higher up than our Rutland office because I'm sure, I'm sure, I, I know G J pretty well. Um, I'm sure G J is pretty dissatisfied with the whole process himself. You know, I'm, I'm sure of that.
I, I'm sure that's true and I, I, yeah, I, I think they've been great partners. They've been, uh, they, they've done a lot to help us out. Uh, it's just, uh, we're not getting any response and they're not getting any response from the owners. They, they ran into the same roadblock we did. It's time, I, I think we all agree. It's time to escalate.
I'm curious to hear from them, like, at what point will there be a demolition? Cause if they just
Bad point.
Yeah, that's what
Which frustrates me and and I know our residents are frustrated and, and, and I know, look, it, we're frustrated as a board. There's, you know, it's not like we're dragging our laurels on There's, you know, it's not like we're dragging our laurels on this, we're, we're frustrated, we had some information given to us a few months ago. It sounded really super positive and then all of a sudden, you know, here you are back in this corner.
Yeah, it's like, hey, put up the fence that you were told to put up the first time and didn't do it.
Yeah, and you're gonna get fined a thousand dollars for it, whoopee.
Yeah.
Holy smoke.
And they told us they were doing it.
Right.
Exactly.
Right.
We all know the feelings of the Rutland office because they made it pretty clear. They were pretty much on board with our, I, I believe the opinion of this board. Before it was sent up and then it went to the state board above them and this, this is the answer that we all received, including them.
So let's, let's schedule that for, we can do it for our next regular meeting rather than, um, have a special.
Executive.
An executive with, with Bob, if he can, with Bob Fisher. If he can come with that specifically and we can, we can make it a specific executive just for the racetrack, that's fine. I just think we should discuss it in, 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 in executive because it is a legal matter, so.
And if anybody knows Mister Solar personally, please let him know, we are trying to reach him.
Right.
Yes.
Um, okay. Any, anybody have anything else on that, I just wanted to speak on that for a minute. Thank you. Town designated keeper of legal records discussion and approval.
Um, so that's pretty much self-explanatory, I guess there was a policy before we started that there be a designated keeper of legal records, documents. Uh, to protect anybody involved in the legal cases, the board and to protect everyone. Uh, my understanding is that you designate a person or two people. And that you would need permission of the full board to be able to view those records. So I just need you all to, I would assume it'd be Hannah and myself, um, are now the keeper of legal records, so I just need you to. Um, hopefully approve that and make a motion.
It's pretty cut and dry as far as I'm concerned.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Hannah and Tara the keeper of the public records.
Uh, second.
Should we?
I'd say public, legal, the legal document specifically.
Legal records.
Yes.
Okay, then I have a motion and I have a second, any more discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye. Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Easy. Uh, domestic animal ordinance further review.
So that I sent back to Leonard before I sent to you all again, and the lawyer also has it, so, um, Mister Fisher, I was on the phone with him earlier and he's been really busy. He's like, I'm not ignoring you guys, and there were some corrections he wanted to see made, definitions. So I will be bringing it back to the next meeting, but before we. If you have any suggestions or additions, corrections that you would like to see before I bring it back to the next meeting, um, now's the time to let me know.
I, I'll, I will have some, uh, some, and I, I had some problems with the definitions as well.
The definitions, because they should match the statutes more, uh, more specifically. I was just trying to include that chickens and free range animals and the domestic pet is a, it's kind of a, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you added that, but below that, I think one or two, maybe half a paragraph below that, you've got a definition of pet. Domestic pet also, which I think kind of puts it all together.
Yeah, I don't know if it puts it together.
It's more confusing, I'm not sure. I think domestic animal means any domestic pet and then it as defined and it seems like an expansion. Uh, it seems like a, to me, a huge expansion of the position because it brings in cattle, sheep, uh, deer, uh, uh.
If, if you have a pet chicken that you let run around to your house, you put a diaper on it, it's your pet.
Or if you have a water.
I think we need to be careful about expanding the role, right? Uh, it just, overall, this is a huge expansion of the role of, of animal control for the town of Pownil. And I think we need to be very careful of that, we're, we're rapidly expanding a department. Uh, and, and making it, I believe, more than it, more than it ought to be, there were a couple of other issues I had in there. So I, I will send in a, my, my comments on it.
Okay, um, and just so that everyone is aware, apparently Leonard has been dealing with multiple occasions of something to do with chickens being an issue. So that is why I tried to include that.
Well, that fell under the free range thing, if I remember.
Yeah, we can definitely tweak, tweak that and narrow it down some.
I know up north there's people that have two follow deer as pets, so. I'm just saying, I just.
There's, the, people can have anything as pets, alligators or whatever, I know.
Right.
Right, and you wouldn't want any, I mean, you don't really want any animal owned by someone leaving.
Look, if people, people have snakes for pets and I can tell you what I'm gonna do with a snake every time I see it.
Me too.
You mean a show, but whatever, I, you know, I'm not a snake lover, but some people love them and God bless them for loving that and snakes out in the wild and eating. Bugs and snakes and whatever are wonderful, as long as I don't see them.
Exactly, I agree. But that's why we keep bringing it back and going back and forth, that's why we keep working on it, I get it, where, where you guys want it, so.
Um, public comment, any public comment, Hannah?
There you go.
Hello, guys, I'm Jim Coase's North Mason Hill Road. First of all, I just wanna thank you very much for, um, um, kinda going through that report with, uh, um, the race, um, the grandstand, um. Um, it, yes, I get, I give the fire marshal and all of those guys a, a huge amount of credit for what they've been doing. Um, or trying to do, um, similar to what you guys have been trying to do before. Unfortunately, um, this guy, um, may have, um, the same idea of, um, even our tag sale person of. Being able to just do what they wanna do and not, not accept any reports, but I was just wondering, since we have the record. Is there any way our, maybe next week you can check with the lawyer, but we should have records that there is a certain mortgage holder. Um, I'm not sure if anyone in the state has included them as a carbon copy. But maybe if we could, um, send a letter as a town and just say, you know, we're very concerned with, um, what's happening down there. And we're not able to, um, get them to accept.
You can address that.
Violations, but, um, I mean, just an idea, I didn't hear you mention it and I hear, I see Tara shaking her head that, yes, maybe it's something.
Yeah, so Jim, real quick, they did send it to the mortgage holder, they also sent it to the solar field, um, management company to make sure they were aware also because they have a vested interest.
Okay, and have we heard back from them at all?
No.
Oh, okay, but maybe, I mean, if, if something that, is that something we sent, just, I'm just curious.
No, uh, the, the Rutland Fire Safety Division.
Okay, well, I was thinking just as a town, maybe we could do that. Um, and just let them know that we're very concerned as a town and, um, and, and everything and maybe that would get them to reply to us or something. But again, I appreciate what you guys are doing with this, I appreciate all those, um, people that are trying to do with it and the fire commissioner and stuff like that, so we'll see what happens. Thanks.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim, um, I think that's, Bob, I think that's a question we can have, Bob, ask Bob Fisher. If we can add, um, the mortgage holder, um, to our, whatever we send to. Uh, Division of Fire and Safety, what do you guys think?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All, all parties involved, I mean, I think we just ask Bob Fisher to make sure that we can actually do that from the town, from the town level. But I think that's a good, really good idea, Jim, thank you. Any other public comment, Hannah? No hands? I'll entertain, entertain a motion to move into executive for personnel discussion regarding a public official.
Executive.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye. Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye. Brian, aye.
Mike, aye, and there will be no action taken tonight. So I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive for personnel discussion with a public official.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye. Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. To, um, come out of executive session for personnel, uh, discussion with a public official.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye. Brian, aye.
Mike, aye, uh, there'll be no action taken tonight, at this time. I'll entertain a motion to enter executive for legal.
So moved.
Executive.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye. Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive for legal.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye. Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Um, I have a couple of things under public comment. Um, Joel sent us a couple of bids, invitation to bid, um, for the furlong road project. And for the, uh, bid for the scrapping of the cat loader. Um, I just need, uh, board's approval to put those out to bid.
So moved on both.
Second.
Any discussion, he sent those this afternoon.
Yeah.
Everybody read them, we're good.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I have a motion, I have a second, I did, right? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye. Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Uh, is there any more public comment, Hannah?
There's anybody else out there, is there?
No hands up.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye. Brian, aye.
Mike, aye.